Recording in progress.
All the meeting to order and ask you Carl to rise and lead us.
I pledge to the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Now, the next part Carl is public comments.
There you go.
I want to start at where in psychology we call the meta level, like really high up, which is climate change. We have smoke outside, some forest fires. We've had a lot of heat that is when I moved here in the spring, it'll be fifty years, it was not normal. What's scary to me is that the hottest days we've had this summer could wind up being the coolest days of the summer in a couple of decades. So it really pains me to say this because I have five grandkids. I don't think the climate is going back to normal. I really don't. So what I think we as a town and you as a select board need to do is think about how do we protect the town? How do we make our town more resilient given this climate change? So that's the premise to come to very specific around this building and the MERC grant and insulation. The MERC grant, as you guys know, was for insulating the building, switching from fossil fuel to electric sources and getting ADA compliant bathroom. This room has been insulated. The majority of the building where everyone normally works is not insulated. We already have a commitment to get heat pumps in both of the buildings and for a good price. Jim Hand has hammered into me over and over again, heat pumps really only work in an insulated house that's not leaky like this building is. So I think it behooves us to make sure we insulate this building, get as airtight as possible so that the heat pumps that are on order and will be installed soon can work. The furnace is still here, thank goodness, if it gets down to, you know, twenty below. I know from reading and personal experience, the curve of a heat pump, the efficiency drops as the temperature drops. So the sweet spot is like really like, you know, thirty to sixty, it's like, hmm, it's great. Below that, you really have to have a building that is already warmed and the heat pumps keep it at a constant temperature. So in terms of the MERC, we did get money for insulation, for heat pumps, ADA compliant and air sealing. So this room was done. I would like to get a sense from you, what I would like is to do some research, to contact contractors who can do some of the things that are missing. I spoke to Scott about this yesterday. Most of you don't know this, before I was a psychologist, I was a building contractor. And I know that when I got my lumber delivered for the deck and the plywood delivered, I was already thinking about the next house, how to get permits and subcontractors and the plan, all that stuff. It takes months, months and months and months. I would like to begin that process of contacting insulating, air sealing contractors to get a sense of cost. I'm going to say now, what I would like to do is present you with a menu of options. Here's perfect, totally sealed, really is super efficient, going to cost X. Kind of a compromise here and there, it's going to cost Y, et cetera. And then you can think about what you want to do. But I'm urging you to think about going beyond what's in MERC and putting some money into the building so that in the long run, we as a town will be more resilient. We'll be spending less on energy and we will have the people to work here, be more comfortable. That's long range. If you looked at the audit that was done for MERC, they said, nope, doesn't pay to insulate this, doesn't pay to insulate that because the payback period was their cutoff is thirty years. I've been here, like I said, close to fifty years, thirty years seems like a lot, but it's not really that much. Nineteen ninety-five is not ancient history. So put the money in now while we have it. My fear is that with global warming, we're going to lose our ski industry. There goes revenue to the town from local options tax, the state's going to lose tourism money. We're not going to have as much money in the system. So to spend it now while we can, over solvent, to me, is the only plausible way to plan for the future where our energy needs will shrink to the point where we can then handle it. So the heat pumps are going to use a lot of electricity. In addition to insulating, I would urge you to think about putting solar panels on that side of the roof. You got a whole huge roof deck. You put enough panels on there, as much electricity as these heat pumps use, you'll be generating it right there. So anyway, that's my spiel. And I would like a sense of, do you want me to do a sue some of these contractors and face down what it's going to cost and what they can do and can't do?
I think it's always good to have information in hand. I think it's always good to have information in hand, as long as we're not spending a lot of money to acquire that information. So.
I'm working for free, so it won't cost you a penny.
There's a question.
Then we have Steve Nichols has his hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, I realize that Scott is going to go over the letter that I submitted last week. But I have some comments I'd like to make concerning my review of that audit.
Um, does this relate to the letter itself?
It relates to the letter of Scott's comments to me.
Well, that's on the agenda under item number nine. So we're not going to discuss things that are on the agenda under public comments.
So am I going to be able to discuss that during his presentation?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm working, so I'm in and out, but okay, thank you, thank you.
Agenda item nine.
Okay.
Anything else under public comments? Seeing nothing. Last for approval of the minutes from July fifteenth.
Seconded.
Seconded, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, minutes are approved. Uh, look for license applications.
So the first one is Sam Johnson's, who in business has Sam's Wood Fired Pizza. I think Sam is here and he is up to date with what we asked of him. Um, and so he's looking for a first class and outside consumption permit. They don't have any issues right at the moment.
He's here. Have anything you want to add to your application, Sam? You do? Okay, well, you were just, because there's a microphone for the people that are on Zoom.
So, um, not really sure what the question is.
Well, I mean, we're just, we're considering your application. I was wondering if you had anything that you wanted to add. I, my, uh, my question is, is this a renewal or a new?
Well, it, no, it's, I've come before in like the last decade, four or three times, but we never shut, you know, finished up with it because we just never, now seems like the right time.
Okay, so as far as the application that meets all the requirements?
It does.
And it's been reviewed by everybody?
By everybody and everybody's in there.
I'll make a motion to approve the license for Sam Wood Fired Pizza.
Seconded. Seconded. Laurie got it.
I think Laurie got it, yeah. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
You're a good salesman.
Well, thank you, yeah, it's tough. Guys making a hard bargain.
Okay, and then there's an outside consumption permit for fucking birds.
Floating birds.
I have flying birds also.
Yeah. The agenda's.
Floating bird, yes, I'm sorry, that's.
That's okay, it was.
It's floating birds, so this, this, as you might recall, is a unique situation. Um, and it's gotten more unique this week. So, um, back in March, you approved vending license. And then in May, approved first and third class liquor license. Um, and apparently she needs an outside consumption permit to house the vehicle in the mobile home park and possibly sell there. The property owner opposes the approval of this, feels it's a violation of his lease with the tenant and a violation of his state permit with the mobile, with the state for a mobile home park permit. Um, and so we, through Anita, we were working with her, trying to find an option that might work because it didn't seem like the mobile home park was going to work. And so, uh, Anita talked to the state liquor control people. Apparently this has been done one other place in the state. Uh, but at that particular location, they had twenty-eight acres of their own land and it didn't, didn't matter. Wasn't like a middle of a home park. So Anita reached out to them this afternoon and said, if you could find an alternative location that might meet the liquor commissioners requirement. So that's where we stand right at the moment.
That we're looking for an alternative location.
We have an application in front of us, but it's for the mobile home park. And the property owner refuses to allow that.
Okay, so if the, if the property owner of the mobile home park doesn't allow this, my feeling is that it's probably not going to happen in that location.
That's correct.
So it would further confuse the issue, I would think, if we were to approve this for that location, right?
So we can, we can, we can withdraw the application or decline it as it stands. And then if she finds another location to store the vehicle, that's acceptable, then we could bring it back to the board at that time.
Do we need a motion on that?
I think we should.
Do you need to take an action or?
Well, I think we should because of the, because of the circumstances.
Okay.
And based on the location.
So I would accept a motion to deny the application based on the, the all the information that we've received.
I'll make a motion.
Extenuating circumstances.
To deny the application based on extenuating circumstances.
Seconded.
Open seconded discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Hopefully they'll find the location.
Yeah. Okay, we have a coin drop request for the Special Olympics.
Second one, this is the second one they were asked to do.
Yes, last year they did one, same location.
Location.
Yeah, there was some hesitancy among the board, I think initially, but then it went off well and they did a good job. And there was no complaints from, that we received.
And I think, based on our experience.
My only question is they, I don't think they were collecting when the light was turned red. They were, traffic wasn't being stopped. They were using the traffic lights to solicit the donations.
Clever. We could, we could tell them not to push the button to stop traffic.
Living on that road, I know that that light turns very quickly, it does anyway, so.
Yeah. Could you just step up here so the people at home can hear?
Just in regards to the floating bird, uh, application and the second location. I just wanted to know if the separate location for the outside consumption would affect anything else that I have like in place as far as like food licensing and all of that stuff.
You don't approve the food licensing, but this board does approve the first and third class liquor license.
Okay, so that would kind of be a standalone, like as long as I have a separate, which I do have a separate location that I could do it at. Okay, all right, that's curious.
You have found a location at this point?
Yes, I have a location, I just, I'm just waiting for the paperwork so I can have this thing to present to you.
I, I don't think there'll be, I don't want to give you an advance approval, but I don't see other issues.
Okay, all right, as long, as long as I know that that's something that, you know, and I know that this is something that's new and it's not like anything that any of us have worked through. So I'm happy to be along on the journey and do whatever I need to do.
Good idea.
Coin drop.
So do you need a motion on this?
Yeah.
Like to make a motion to approve the request for the Special Olympics Unified People to do a coin drop on the twenty-first of September.
Seconded. You got it again?
And you should get further discussion? Hearing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Five oh again. Okay, uh, at our last meeting, we discussed perhaps some different ways to fund this presser that the fire department wants to get. In the contract that we got, it's, it's, it's a, is that a lease with an, with an option to buy? A buy, a lease buyer?
Lease in three years and then.
Then you own it. Yes, yeah. Um, but there's a six point two percent finance charge for a year. We talked about using the, the reserve fund, of course, that money is pretty much already earmarked for other items, even though there's this pretty substantial balance in there. The question is, can we temporarily use that as a, as a place to fund from? Uh, with, with the idea that we will raise the contribution at town meeting for, raise the request for approval at town meeting to, to cover the gap.
You could just do a mirror of this lease and roll it over for three, three years. Pay back in three years, we pay ourselves back in three years.
Also.
Without, without financing.
How is the fire equipment reserve fund invested? What's the return on that?
Um, that's invested through the Schwab. Um, and then you'll see, actually you can see it on our next, on the second pages that I've sent for capital review. Fire Equipment Fund, so, um, it's showing, well, that's a breakout of it. She doesn't show the return Ivan, it shows the breakout, like equity is twenty-seven percent and fixed income twenty-three percent. And then the cash value forty-eight percent.
But if we do, do we think we're making four percent on it?
We are.
So the difference is two percent. If, if we, if we funded ourselves, we're losing the four percent. And a six, six point two percent if we, if we do the lease agreement. So the, so the difference in two percent over the three-year time period, I'm just guessing off the top of my head, maybe it's ten percent of the total. Uh, it might be four thousand bucks.
I mean, when you, when we finance it ourselves, we could, we can alter it later on if we need to. With a lease, you're locked in.
Yeah.
You know, if, let's say we get into a year or two down the road and we want to accelerate uh, the savings towards the future truck that they need, then we could eliminate the lease payments.
Yep.
And then accelerate that, that time.
Yeah, so it gives us options, but.
I'm sorry, we have or have not done something like this before?
Yeah, we have. Uh, funded trucks, built trucks.
And you'll see in that Cooney Bank loan, that's the last payment this, this year. So that goes, that goes away and that's thirty-eight thousand right there.
And that's like the compressor.
Yeah. Yeah.
I do, I mean, considering all the moving pieces, I think we should self-fund on this.
Okay, I'm going to have, I'm going to have Mike draw up an agreement so we have that in hand and on record. I think in the past, when we've done this, we've had trouble locating what the agreements were.
We need to remember what we did.
Yeah.
I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the board.
It makes sense. Especially being more flexible.
Saving money, being more flexible.
So do you need a motion on this?
Yeah, I think we should, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we fund the oxygen tank compressor purchase for the fire department through the equipment reserve fund that we can then decide on how we pay ourselves back in the next couple of weeks.
I mean, and I got two.
I'm sorry, that was terrible.
Gimbala motion.
Okay, that when it's done.
How do you do on that Katie, did we get a?
I'm going to view it on Gina.
I'll second it when it's so.
What was the seconded, any further discussion on this? Uh, hearing none, all favors say aye. Any opposed, that's five oh.
And then there's a sheet I passed out, it made it as far as Ivan, I think, if you want, pass it the rest of the way. So at the top, on the one we sent out to the fire department, you do see the capital balances up there where it says Schwab Investment Balance. This is just enough to. This is just an up-to-date version that we got from the town treasurer, Brian, so the the numbers are very close to what it was on 630. In those two bullet points that I I highlighted, those were questions I had for Mike, and the reason why there's a difference is that we received a local option tax payment, so that bumped that property tax relief fund back way up over that 630 balance, and then the police vehicle, they bought a police vehicle, so that's why I lowered that up.
Okay, very good. Anything else on reviewing the capital balance? It is section B of the agenda.
Ivan, just as an FYI, in the past, Mike had been told not to move the money until the end of the year. I've I've got him moving it at the beginning of the year, once we get by the cash flow issues that usually are around July 1st. So by mid-August, everything will be moved, so we have a good handle on things, especially during the budget discussion.
The other question, just while we're talking about this, is that we had talked about this a bit in the past, but we've determined that there's going to be an expenditure from one of these funds, like especially like a larger expenditure. We should really be moving that to a money fund and taking it out, kind of riskier assets. Do we do that? I don't think we have historically.
I don't think we have either, and we can direct that.
Yeah.
And have Brian do that, sure.
So like I feel like once we've made a decision that something like, oh, we know we're purchasing a truck in the next six months or something, we should have it less in, you know, stocks and bonds and more and just and just like money fund.
Flexible money market, yeah, okay. For instance, this compressor purchase, if we weren't doing that right away, we've committed that money, so.
It should. Because then if it happens to like the day that you have to pay for it happens to be during a terrible month where the, you know, market was down a lot, it's just not good financial management.
Okay.
Anything else? Not seeing any, reappointment of public officials, we need to reappoint the the committee, various committee members who's current were up this year. And with a we're gonna have to have more discussion on the deputy service officer. That was historically a select board member. And that that seat was filled by Wayne Bell, and he hasn't been a select board member in quite some time, and I think Katie, it was either you or somebody reached out to Wayne.
Or he did.
And and he said that he thought I should probably go back to a board member. There's not I mean, this, our primary service officer is.
PJ.
Is the chief, yes.
What is a deputy service officer? If the chief's not available. We'd have to cover that role, which is very infrequent.
It would be very infrequent, yeah. Does that mean you're interested?
And we can leave it vacant for now, if you want to move on, but.
Does anybody want to?
I'll I'll put my name down.
Oh wow, we've got we've got.
I mean, I'm already the deputy, I do the deputy for the the alternate for the the warrants due, so. Why not be second for that too?
Okay. We have we have a hat in the ring. Probably should be framed in the as a motion.
We have all the others too, right?
You could you could do the whole blank slate as presented, including the addition of Jonathan West as some service officer.
So
make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to elect a slate of officers for reelection, or I'm sorry, reappointment as presented, including Jonathan West as the deputy service officer.
And and is that a yearly appointment?
I believe it is.
Yeah, Patrick's it's set for 26, so I assume so.
Yeah, I think it is, we know his is, so I think that one.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm second.
Laurie's on it.
Laurie is. All payers say aye.
Aye.
That's five oh.
It's the Jan chair.
We've updated our our list of.
There's still that vacancy at the Investment Advisory Board, so if anybody, no, I know Doug is suing somebody, so see.
Look forward to filling that vacancy sometime. All right, the next one, vendor license expiration and enforcement, we we did a what would call temporary approval for 60 days. And the the problem is, and and Mr. Brown is not here, that the the vending operation itself is out of compliance in several areas. Scott, you gave us a list, actually.
Sure, that was included in the in the letter.
Yeah. The the overall square footage exceeds the maximum of 300 square feet for a class two license. This use has a generator, the use of generators is not allowed for a vendor, the use of tents is not allowed. Daytime sandwich board signs must be removed at the end of each day and and propane tanks must be secured. Without I mean, the the idea of giving 60 days was to try to bring this into compliance in some manner, and I and I don't believe any thing has been done, these photographs are ours of August 1st. What do we do?
And I'll just quickly go over the brief history of.
Okay.
As you know, all the vending licenses, the annual ones expire at the end of the year, end of the calendar year. So January 1st, everybody's got to apply for a new annual license. So we received an application for a class one from from Mr. Brownie on January 4th. But, you know, it it clearly exceeded a class one, and we needed more information of the layout and diagram and the length and things like that, which we never received back, so the DRB, in the meantime, wanted to review vending licenses, which you guys agreed to, so on the April 2nd, they reviewed about about three of them, but they had not enough information, they felt, on this one, so they voted five to zero not to approve it, just because they didn't have enough information, so we've asked for more information. Over a period of time, we've gotten a little bit by dragging it out, and then we in May, we received an $800 fee, which is the former class one license vending license fee. And then in June, on June 3rd, you guys agreed to a 60-day temporary license. Last week, the zoning department reviewed the site, took those pictures, and then on the 3rd, the 60 days expired.
Well, you know, we've I've I've given a lot of background on this, and I and I think everybody's familiar with how we try to differentiate between a vendor and a and a restaurant. And when we first conceived of the idea of licensing vendors, it was hot dog carts, like Manzy. And and that that was fairly easy, but then but then it became more complicated and more extended and and menus expanded and and the vehicles out of which they were sold got bigger. And so we we created these different classes of vending. Fully understanding that vendors are in competition with our restaurants, who pay their bills by serving lunches as well. The difference is an actual restaurant has to go through zoning process, has to go through all sorts of other criteria. They have to provide parking, they have to provide everything that has to do with land use ordinances. Vendors just take up a little space, no parking. They serve the itinerary. Population as it goes through, this one is different, this one sits out of the public way, it's a destination, rather than serving the passing public. And it's sprawl, there's a lot to it. And again, that being a vendors, they don't have to provide parking or any of the other things that that bricks and mortar restaurants have to provide, and it really blurs that line of differentiation between a vendor and a restaurant. And we created the criteria by which these things could exist, this definitely pushes beyond the limit. And we have to come to a decision. If if what's happening here is reasonable for a vendor, then we need to change the ordinance. If we're going to stick by what we have in place, this is out of compliance. And and my my thought is, we can't approve it. So that's my perspective.
Does he, I mean, the letter, after you sent this letter at the beginning of June, has there been, has he made any, did he reach out? I think it was a really nice letter, I mean, it was basically saying how we'll try to help you.
We've been trying to work with him, but he's reluctant to come in and work with us, so we've approached him through the zoning department a couple of times. And just really haven't gotten what we need from him.
It's tough because you're making, you know, we can't have rules that some people follow and some people don't, I mean, the sandwich board, I know it's every single day and.
I mean, even this even the size, I mean, they measured it 37 feet by 23, but it was it's it's an L shape, so that's not full 37 by 23, but 37 by 23 is 850 square feet.
And, I mean, I I would also say that, you know, the idea behind these is that they could be easily moved. And looking at some of the structure that is constructed, it's you know.
Permanent.
It's more it's more permanent, so. I I I don't want to see anyone be pushed out of business, but I do want to see Mr. Brownie you know, come back into the lines a little bit on this.
And the other piece that hasn't been mentioned is that last year, you guys allowed vendors to leave their equipment overnight if they came to you and and asked permission and you, you know, voted on it on individual basis, this has not happened at this location.
Under the ordinance. It should be removed at the end of the day unless we've taken an action to allow it to stay.
That's correct, right.
So.
It'd be pretty hard to remove this.
Can we offer a final 30 day? And say, I, this is, I know.
I think we have to do something.
Yeah.
I don't think we can just pull the plug.
No, no. Because I mean, if we did say, these are the these are the violations, and we've attempted to reach out to him. I mean, I I see him every morning at Stewart's, so it's not like he's not, he doesn't see me. I think that we should put a tighter timeline on it. And say that if, you know, if there hasn't been if this hasn't been brought back into compliance, and obviously, I think that, you know, if there's we have two meetings in the next 30 days, which it could come, it could come to you any day, right? If there's a problem along the way. But I think we could you know, I I would say extend it 30 days as a final and say if it's not brought brought back into compliance, that we're going to have to ask that it be removed.
I agree.
I think that's I think that's reasonable, is that a?
All correct.
And that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
So that's five oh.
So it's a 30-day
Extension.
Extension, and then I will indicate that the fines will begin after that if we don't hear back from him, and I'll I'll include that in the letter. And just so that he knows the the outcome.
Reduction of what he's got there physically. And 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 the other things are I mean, it's all aggressive.
Yeah.
And and we we can't just continue to approve something that falls outside of the of the criteria that they have in place, so.
Okay.
This is a mobility issue too, if you can't, if he doesn't, if he hasn't asked for a overnight permission, right, that 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 means or suggests that that it needs to be mobile.
Yeah.
And this is hardly mobile.
Yeah.
I mean, I would I would say this is a a restaurant. It's not a, this is not a vending situation.
Yeah.
So there we are.
Well, if it's if it's a restaurant, then there are, it's a more serious violation of
Yeah.
of our ordinances.
So I'll give him that 30 days and and indicate what will happen if he doesn't respond. And and I won't be back to you guys again, we'll just go right into the enforcement mode.
Okay.
If there's no response, there's no change.
Alright.
With a final day, like with a final day, but.
Before the fines.
Yeah.
I mean, after the fines, like, you know, like instead of drag continuously dragging it out.
If he's. We'd go through the the second degree civil violation, we issue a ticket, and we can do that per day. Be like $50 a day type of thing. For compliance.
Yes, but there is a, well, what it is.
But I mean, but if he's willing to work with us, you know, Laurie, we'll we'll work with it, it's not like drawing a line in the sand, but we need some response, some action.
Be able to end it too.
Well, it's certainly, it's not only what you've expressed, but it's not clear to all the other vendors in any way.
No. There's probably other vendors that would love to be able to expand and have them.
Very clear.
Yeah.
Very good. Town manager updates. And the first one is the Nichols letter.
Let's see if he's, there's Steve, you there?
Yes, he is.
Steve has his hand up.
There you go.
I am. Did you want, did you want me to go first, Scott, in case you wanted to answer some of these questions in your talk?
Yeah, go ahead. I think we lost him.
He had the wrong button.
Well, while we're while we're waiting for Steve to come back, Steve had asked a number of questions. And he had asked for a response to his questions, and Scott responded with a letter. There were Steve's still not back. As far as I can tell, there were 10 answers to 10 questions. It was a lot, Steve had read his list of questions to us, and he submitted a written copy of that to make it easier to respond.
He's bad.
Okay, Steve is back, I've been kind of filling the gap before he goes back.
Sorry, I'm trying to pull up my letter, I I don't want to lose you again.
Hit me? Nope, still there.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, I did review um, the audit and went through it. For Scott's responses, Scott was very nice to list the pages of to verify what my questions pertain to. Now, these are how I look at that audit. Now, I can be wrong and I want to be uh, corrected if I am wrong. Um, in reading this, we're over budget in a general fund with no record of where the money was spent by two hundred and thirty two thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars. This to me indicates, um, it should mean reasonable revenues and expenditures per the auditor's comments per how you budgeted as written. Um, I don't think that two hundred and thirty two thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars is a reasonable amount to be over. Non, also non-major special reserve funds by thirty six thousand, eight hundred and forty four dollars with no reconciliation. Deficiency of revenue, twenty four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, no explanation. Statement of activities deficiency, thirty thousand, six hundred and fifteen. These are indicated by the auditor that they are significant deficiencies uh, do exist. The general fund uh, checking, uh, the general fund checking not being reconciled. This means to the taxpayers, checks are being drafted with no reconciliation present or could even mean not approved by the select board these expenditures. The meaning of materialistic in this audit is just so vague. Um, the auditor opinion on compliance um, is not their job? Well, what is their job and why do we pay them? Um, you know, I do not, and taxpayers should not accept that over two hundred thousand dollars is any way materialistic. So where is it? The bottom line uh, as deciphered by any taxpayer would be the town balance sheet does not balance and that of negative two hundred and thirty two thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars is significance. It's surely not materialistic as visible in the audit, along with the three other deficiency amounts. Also, how can FEMA grant money be negative when these are generated federal dollars through the state? These recorded in certified figures by the auditor would and should surely generate questions by other taxpayers. Now my questions, who is going to be held accountable for the past and the future? What is the outline protocol set forth by the select board? So this doesn't happen again. There has been no written or any discussion on future controls that is transparent. My other question is, has there been and could this financial issue in any way be considered criminal in nature? I am asking this uh, these questions that I have here to be on the record as in this meeting tonight. Thank you.
Okay, there was, there was a lot there and the magnitude of the numbers to me is a little bit surprising because I didn't have, I hadn't found those kind of numbers. Um, are are Steve's numbers generally correct?
I can't, I can't follow them. I I need something in writing from them. Uh, because we had the auditor in here, they explained everything and he had multiple questions for them and the auditors answered it. The auditors only found.
Scott, Ivan did not. They did not answer those questions. They would not. The only discussion that was had from them was it was materialistic and at two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, as far as I'm concerned, is not materialistic. And you know those numbers, you've, you've read the audit.
Where did you, where did you get the number two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars?
It's right in the audit item. It's pretty sa, it, it actually is pretty simple.
The audit's seventy, eighty pages long.
Scott gave me the page numbers. I went in there and just took those figures right out of the audit.
They have him send his concerns to us again in writing and then they'll make another attempt.
Do that. I'm happy, I'm happy to.
Well, I, yeah, and I, no, these are very, very serious. This is a serious issue. And I appreciate your bringing it to our attention. And uh, I agree with Scott, we need to have these questions submitted in writing so that we can get complete answers to them. And uh,
And you know, and you know too, Ivan. I mean, it's just, you know, I don't want to see anything, you know, the protocol of not, you know, holding somebody accountable. I don't care who did it or how it was done, but where are we going?
Yeah, and I, my understanding is that a lot of the procedures have been tightened up so that and and I'm still unsure of the magnitude. Um, uh, I'd have to run the numbers myself, but um, uh, we should not be seeing these types of discrepancies in the future. Um, and but uh, please, you know, submit your questions because I want to see the answers as much as you do. And uh, um, it it's important that the whole board understands exactly what issues exist um, and and the magnitude of those issues and uh, how to address that, how that happened in the past and how to address it going forward. I agree with you.
And what I'll do, Scott, is I'll, I'll send these out and then I'll add to my conversation in reference to the page numbers that you sent me and the line and the line items so you can identify that.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Steve.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Alright. Um, anything else on the, on the Nichols questions and the answers up to this point? I don't want to move off if there's something left to speak about. Um, item B is the legal fees and per.
Yeah, you've got in your packet a couple particular cases we've been dealing with and just to show you the expenditure that's costing the town. In fact, one of those cases is going to trial this Friday um, in Bankers Superior Court. And in in order to prep for that, we have to meet with the town's attorney, three staff members tomorrow for a period of time. That's going to cost additional dollars. So um, I just want you to be aware of it because we've talked about these things in the past and you know, it's costing the taxpayers some money.
Um, just on uh, we have other legal fees beyond these two that you I mean, these are your ones, you know, people, I know that uh, the, the Development Review Board uh, asks questions of our attorney and gets answers. And that's.
Many of the.
That's billable. I know that we have asked questions. Um, so.
And VLCT wouldn't be included in this anyway because that's part of our fee, right?
Right, right. That's right.
But uh, um, what's the, what's our budget for legal and consulting? It's, it's, it's legal and consulting on one line, right?
It is.
I want to say this, this might be uh, I think it's thirty, I'm not even gonna guess.
Seventy eight.
Seventy eight, okay, it's kind of considerable. So this is a third of that just for these two items. Right? And call consulting, of course, includes other sure, things as well.
Anyways, I just want you to be aware because these particular cases sometimes sometimes are just brought. Okay, are you? Steve has his hand up again.
Well, Steve.
Ivan, the, the two pending, I guess what we need to look at is how we can avoid those. I mean, well, that would be the, 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 the question. Yeah, you know, I know what the losses are pertaining to, but how do we avoid situations like that?
Yeah, they're two very different uh, situations, of course. Um, and uh, these kind of things are gonna show up from time to time and it gets, and it gets more and more expensive. I mean, one, both of them relate to compliance with land use ordinance. And it, and it gets back to our discussion that we just had under the vending ordinance. Um, we, if we have ordinances, we need to apply them fairly to everyone. Um, if people are out of compliance, we need to uh, try to bring them into compliance. Uh, if if we can't do that, then we need to somehow uh, e- either, either stop them from, from doing what they're doing or, 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 or bring them into compliance. So, um, if we're gonna have ordinances, we have to enforce them.
And and you're absolutely right, but we have to treat everybody the same way and we haven't been. And you know that. And I think that is how we get into these situations.
It's, it's, that's true, but at least one of these lawsuits and cases is because we're trying to treat an individual that has maybe been given the, the opportunity to, for us to uh, overlook some things. We're, we're trying to bring that person into compliance with everybody else and uh, it, the money's being spent to try to treat that person as we would treat someone else. Uh, so it, it's in an attempt to uh, address any inequities that might exist between the way to treat you. I agree. We, we need to apply them fairly and equally to everyone. The problem is some people don't want to conform. And we can either look the other way or pursue it.
And we're just enforcing our ordinances.
Right.
It's one for everybody. Um, annual reviews, we've completed those. Um, just finished them up this week, met with everybody and they're in the files, so that's good. Um, I included in your packet some comments from Garrett Baxter, the chief VLCT attorney regarding deliberative and exec executive sessions. Um, a question had come up from one of the other bodies. And so we got a direct answer and it includes everybody, basically. Um, and just a final comment that pickle, pickleball slash tennis court construction reconstruction has started. So they demoed uh, the fencing in the court itself uh, today. And they're moving forward pretty quickly. So that one, that'll be happening soon. On going. That's all I have.
Um, any comments on any of those items? Uh, if not, we're down to other business. This is for the board members. Is there any other business at the table?
Um, we felt a housing task force meeting last night, which was uh, a culmination of the three individual meetings for each of the proposals. Um, we were not able to come to a conclusion last night, but we are meeting again. Um, soon. I believe it's the fourteenth, I want to say, uh, Tuesday the fourteenth. Uh, Tuesday the twelfth, sorry, Tuesday the twelfth. But we had their biggest attendance last night, but we've had any housing task force meeting in this building. So that was, that was a positive.
A little update from Northshire Community Courthouse. Um, right now we're waiting for um, for the architect's report to understand what needs to be done to um, facilitate some repairs and preserving the building. And then simultaneously Gordon and I are just doing a rough draft on what a lease would look like uh, between the town and Northshire Community Courthouse. So just moving along.
Scott, on that, can the town continue to take care of the overhead as part of its contribution to the project versus just putting utilities in the hands of the nonprofit?
You mean, can we continue to pay utilities and?
And then keep that as a, you know, that's what the town has been doing on behalf of the of the project itself. I mean, it's a kind, it would be, I guess, a contribution.
Yeah, be part of our budget. It's, I mean, it's in there right, in there right now.
Yeah, just versus cutting it off and saying, okay, this is all your
Yeah.
Your responsibility at this point and.
For this fiscal year, we've got, we've got that covered, it's covered and then going to the board.
So it'd be possible. And I don't know if we talked to Gordon about that.
Yeah, I sent, uh, I wrote up, I wrote up the draft, you know, because that's what I do, lease agreements now. Um, and it kind of has a phase, it's the, the ideas that would have a phased approach. So while it's in its kind of construction phase, we would participate a little. And then with the way out, you know, I mean, for, from my opinion, it's still a good taxpayer move because we own the building. Um, it's gonna be a pretty big pricey ticket to um, preserve it and fix it so that it's, you know, um, all in compliance. Um, and this is just a way for us to fundraise to make that happen instead of it being on the taxpayers' back. And so I think a few, you know, couple of years during a construction phase for us to still heat the building and make sure things are running while all this is happening is a small thing, you know, in the long, in the long term.
Well, it's, it's covered in the budget until June thirty first.
Yeah.
Next year. The end of the fiscal year and.
So we're just right.
During our, during our budget discussions, we'll talk about what our participation will be going forward.
So we're, we're just drafting some ideas on how that might look and that'd give us some, something to start with anyway.
I was just putting a
We used.
A little seed out there to
Yeah, totally.
See if it, yeah.
Yeah, if there's any opposition to it.
Yeah, plow in the road.
Exactly.
And and, but it was actually just something I was thinking about and seeing whether or not that was in. It's good to hear you guys are thinking phased in approach. That it.
Excited. That's up.
Any, any other business? My understanding is that we uh, may have a need for an executive session.
Yeah, uh, I move that we enter executive session under Title One, BSA, Section three thirteen subsection A one to discuss a contract matter of the premature public disclosure of which could place the town at a substantial disadvantage.
Those are good.
Is there a second?
Oh, I can.
Oh, Laurie got it again. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, at this point, I don't anticipate taking any action. Uh, this executive session, is there a possibility that we might take an action? Okay, so uh, the only action that we will be taking after this uh, executive session will be to close the meeting. There will, will be no more public discussion where you're here for for a purpose or just for the entertainment.
You guys missed the public comment.
Yeah, good. Glad to have you here. So we will go into executive session and when we come out, we will close. Yeah. And I, thank you all for your time.
Recording stopped.
Actually, um, it's.